Council Agenda Township Parsippany Troy Hills Regular Township Council Meeting of April 21, 2020. Introduction Posting of Notice Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 18, 2019, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 23, 2019, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18, 2019. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 p.m. Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net. I ask everybody to stand for the flag salute please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call Mr. Carriffi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani. Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
And Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Township Attorney Jim Lott, Business Administrator Keith Kazmark, CFO Ann Cucci, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President, we have a quorum, may I begin?
Please.
Upcoming meetings, May 5, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., that's an agenda meeting, May 19, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., that's a regular meeting. Approval of minutes will be on for the next meeting. Now under Presentations and Reports, Mayor.
These are unusual times. I don't need to hit that point home too hard for people because we all get that. Right now, I'm still working on a budget that I intend to have in the hands of council members by the end of this week. I just want you to understand, Council, that literally every week, there are new bills, orders, and changes at both the state and federal level. Now with these changes to revenue streams and timelines, it's been difficult to make a living document that will last all year. I'm not sure of how many towns have already submitted budgets during or before the pandemic began and the state emergency was declared, but this budgeting process has been taking time. But I want to put forth a budget that's fiscally responsible now and for the future, as well as one that's mindful of the financial crisis that is currently impacting our residents, our town, our state, and our nation. Above all else, I want to make sure residents of Parsippany can stay in their homes and pay their bills. Now this COVID-19 pandemic has been ongoing in New Jersey for over a month, and it's taken a real toll on our community. And I just want you to know that, at least at this point, what I understand, that we've had 41 departed souls here in Parsippany. That's 41 families impacted. And that's a number that grows every other day and is haunting me. And if you are interested in keeping up with those numbers, the Morris County website is the most up-to-date source of information. You can find daily updates at health.morriscounty nj.gov/coronavirus. Now while we should all be devastated by the toll this virus has taken on our lives and health, we also need to remember how many times worse the impact would be if we were not practicing safe social distancing. Every week, the rate of new cases is dropping significantly, but this is not going away, not yet. Social distancing and related measures are working to flatten the curve, and every week we keep this up is another week that hundreds, if not thousands, of lives are saved. We're not out of this crisis yet, and we must maintain what we've been doing if we don't want this virus to spike a second time. With that said, we have been getting some assistance and some help from the federal government as well. I was informed that just recently, we are on receipt of over $21,000 of stimulus money. Okay, where did this come from, Chief Financial Officer?
It was deposited.
It was just deposited to our account today, okay? Yeah, so it's a stimulus payment, it's a CARES Act relief stimulus payment, and also Congresswoman Cheryl's been working very hard, she appropriated $127,000 for Parsippany's fight against COVID-19. Now with that said, I'd like to end with true thanks to our first responders and essential workers. You know, there's not a person around right now who's had things easy, but these brave souls are going out into the world, every day a tremendous risk to keep us safe. EMTs, nurses, grocery store workers, sanitation people, and delivery people, and so many others deserve not just our gratitude, but our support as we move through this pandemic and beyond. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Council, for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
President, if I may, I have a question of the mayor.
Go ahead.
Are the $21,000 that has been given to us by CARE, is that the CARE Act? Is that in addition to the $127,000 that I understand from last meeting is going to be earmarked to our Health Department?
That is my understanding that the $27,000 is on top of the $127,000.
Okay.
But I can get that confirmed for you, go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, hi Luetta. We just happened to get the deposit, we were under the impression that the $127,000 that's coming is going to come from a different vehicle via like a grant. So I spoke with some of my colleagues, no one else has gotten this yet, so we're going to treat it like a grant since we don't know the rules yet, and I'm not sure if it's part of the $127,000, but it wasn't supposed to be processed the way it was. We didn't expect to get this, so I'm going to put it in as a grant, and we're researching right now to make sure we spend it the right way. We are, though, getting quite a bit of donations for the food pantry. We've decided to, my office anyway, separate all the food pantry money from any other money and put it in as a dedicated by rider. You will see it on the next council meeting because we are getting, I'm telling you, donations everywhere, which is just wonderful. And that's going to be available from Michelle Pecone. In addition, we've set up a special account for her to be able to go shopping at Shop Right for the People and be able to get goods like that. So we're really very busy with that.
I have another question, please. The 41 departed, do we know if a majority of them have come from our long-term care facilities, or are they coming from other venues?
I believe Business Administrator Kazmark has numbers related to how many are coming out of the long-term care facility, I think it's about 27, is that correct?
Through you, Council President, to Councilwoman Gragnani, 27 of the 41 deceased were living in some sort of senior facility when they passed away. So that comes from our Health Officer. I had a conversation with Carlo yesterday about this very issue before I was given these numbers for tonight's meeting. He is monitoring each of the facilities here in Parsippany. There was actually an online article last night that summarized all of the senior living, assisted living, nursing home types of facilities throughout the state of New Jersey. It was separated by county, and it indicated the number of COVID-related illnesses in each of those facilities, and then a corresponding column reflected each of the number of deaths in each of those facilities. So Carlo is monitoring that. The only way that those numbers can be given out by facility is through the New Jersey Department of Health. The local Health Department does not have the legal authority to issue those numbers, they must be reported out by the New Jersey Department of Health. But yes, 27 of the 41 were in that environment when they unfortunately passed.
Thank you.
I have a comment, if I may. Out of the 400-plus states that have been identified in Parsippany of the coronavirus, I asked, well, I asked our Business Administrator first, and then he hooked me up with Carlos the next day, I can't imagine that we don't have clusters, you know, 10 or 12 in the same area, same apartment complex, or same neighborhood. But according to Carlos, we have no clusters in Parsippany. I find that hard to believe, first of all, but because I would like us to be proactive if we could. If we did have a hotspot, then we should be petitioning for more testing kits and test everyone in a complex or in a neighborhood to identify the person who's carrying the virus that's spreading it. Without having any hotspots identified, we're just sitting here counting numbers and we can't do anything about it. We're reactive, not proactive.
Well, Mr. Council President, this is Mayor Soriano. Now, right now, we have HIPAA laws, and those HIPAA laws do not allow government...
I'm not looking...
No, 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 Michael, please let me finish. HIPAA laws do not allow us to know exactly where the people live or their names, revealing their identity or giving it to the government. However, the Health Officer is the only one that can know those, so he is the one managing that. And by the way, you and I can agree on one thing, we certainly need to do more testing. If, I wish we had our own testing kits in here in Parsippany, I wish I could test everyone in this township, but we don't have that. But I agree with you on that. I wish there was a way you and I could work together to get testing kits for this entire town, but that's just not happening.
Mayor, I was trying to find addresses or names or phone numbers or social security numbers, I just wanted to know if our Health Officer could identify hotspots that the town should be paying attention to.
So through you, Council President, knowing that that was a concern of yours, and I've had that discussion with another member of the governing body, I have reiterated that since our Sunday phone call many weeks back with Carlo, and he has indicated to me that the only place where there is a spread, where it would be, I don't know if he would define it as a cluster, but in a facility, would be in one of the senior living or nursing home facilities that I discussed earlier. As far as neighborhoods, and he obviously is privy to the locations in which these are occurring, he's indicated to me that there is nothing that rises to the concern of being concerned about one particular neighborhood in particular. So that continues to be the case as of yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, take any presentations, questions, or reports from the Township Council. Okay, seeing...
Nobody's meeting!
Okay. Township Attorney, Mr. Lott.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Lott. Business Administrator, Mr. Kazmark.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we are 44 days into the COVID-19 public health emergency here in New Jersey. The initial declaration of a state of emergency and public health emergency was declared by Governor Murphy on March 9. As the mayor indicated, we currently have 529 confirmed cases here in the township, 41 deceased individuals, 27 of which were related to senior living or nursing home facilities. As far as the operations of the municipality, we are continuing our minimal operations while still providing essential services to the residents of the township. We are operating in almost every department on split shifts in an effort to reduce the possibility of cross-contamination of employees. It is paramount that we keep our employees healthy during this time period so that we can continue to perform the essential functions of the municipality such as police patrol, garbage collection, maintaining our parks as they are still open, keeping our roads in repair, and then the traditional functions of all the other departments here in Parsippany. Two side notes that I want to make as far as operations go, I had a lengthy conversation with Police Chief Miller this morning. Once the state declared the county parks and the state parks closed, there was a concern amongst municipalities here in Morris County and throughout the state of New Jersey that keeping municipal parks open might be a concern due to the fact that people who could not get into state or county facilities would come to municipal parks. To date, that has not been a real concern. There was one park in town where we did have one issue, the chief has encouraged his men to patrol that on foot during the course of their shifts, and that seems to have relieved the problem up there. But we are monitoring the parks. Keep in mind, too, the weather has been such that it has been a little chilly, not every day, but most days, probably the nicest day we've had was Easter Sunday, and people were occupied with other types of activities, hopefully honoring social distancing during that period. But we are monitoring the parks and we will continue to do so as the weather warms. In addition to that, the police have been monitoring all of the open essential stores in the township. I know at the last council meeting, we had a number of discussions about lines at the supermarket and the amount of people in the supermarket. Well subsequently to that, the governor issued an executive order that required just 50% occupancy of each of those stores. So those businesses are responsible for monitoring those who are shopping and the number of people who are shopping at any one time, and they seem to have complied with any type of line or queue outside the store as people are waiting to enter. So the chief reports to me that on both the park front and the business front, we seem to be as in good of shape as we can be under the circumstances. In addition, one of the other concerns that's been expressed to the Action Center and to my office is the fact that our recycling center is not open. And I realize that, you know, people are home doing yard work, cleaning up their properties, and we appreciate that. However, we have a limited number of employees who are able to operate moving the dumpsters in and out at that facility during the course of the workday. There are only two people, and they are on split shifts at DPW, who have the ability to do that, and they are both responsible for collecting trash specifically in our apartment complexes here in Parsippany. So to open up the recycling center, we would need to stop collecting trash in some of the apartment complexes that need to be collected with a certain truck, and that is the difficulty with regard to opening the recycling center. I have talked to Greg Schneider, our Director of Public Works, at length about this. We were going to take some employees who were not active at the Knoll and move them down there to monitor the recycling center, that was one of the ideas we had, but unless we have somebody to move the roll-offs, especially with the volume of debris that's being dropped off, Greg has made the recommendation that we maintain the center closed, and I support him in that decision. We have, as the mayor indicated, been monitoring daily updates from the state of New Jersey and from the federal government. The state right now is considering a number of local finance rules that may be relaxed or changed in light of the COVID emergency, including considering spreading out special emergency appropriations for COVID costs over a longer period of time rather than having to pay that back over in the next year's budget to spread those payments over five years or longer. In addition, if we have to go out for tax anticipation notes to solve any short-term cash problems, we will be doing so. I think every municipality will likely be doing so, it's a matter of how long we would have to pay those back. Ordinarily, they have to be paid back in a 12-month period. We're hoping that the state will look favorably upon spreading that out to five years or more as well. We also received guidance yesterday with regard to any possibility to have to furlough anybody because of their classification as essential versus non-essential. In some cases, the bill that's pending before the state senate at this point would actually put more money in the employees' pockets than they are currently earning because they would be able to take advantage of the stimulus program even if they were furloughed, and they would actually be earning more per week based upon that federal and state cost share. So we're looking for more guidance on that, and again, that is still a pending bill before the legislature.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Excuse me. Business Administrator Kazmark, are you referring to the Senator Sweeney's plan to assist the furlough people with additional monies, providing, depending on the amount of money that they earn, they will get anywhere from $5,100 to $1,008, depending on their salary?
Yes.
I happen to read that in the Star-Ledger today.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The other piece that we're asking for support on from the legislature is if in fact we need to borrow any money, whether it be tax anticipation notes or any other form of short-term funding, that the county and the Board of Education share the expense that we take on by freeing up cash flow. Because obviously, if, when tax collection comes in, and we'll talk about that in a moment, we have to pass those dollars on to the state, I'm sorry, to the county and to the Board of Education, and if we are going to borrow to free up those costs, the legislature is considering having the county and the Board of Education share in that expense. We're monitoring FEMA reimbursement, Justin Lizza, our Township Engineer, is calculating all of those costs. We do have some guidance from the federal government that there is a possibility that we can recuperate some of the costs relative to COVID through FEMA, so we're taking that very seriously as well. We've provided information for small business assistance programs to small businesses that have reached out in the township, and we have implemented the new FMLA leave guidance that has also been presented by the Federal Department of Labor. With regard to tax payments, it does not look like the state of New Jersey will take any action in adjusting or moving the May 1 deadline. So as of this council meeting, and I believe it will stay this way, the May 1 deadline stands. Municipalities do have the legal authority to adjust the interest rate. Every year, we set the interest rate within the township, I believe it's 8 and 18%, Ann, which is the maximum allowed by the statute. Townships, municipalities throughout the state can adjust those numbers. What we cannot do is waive interest, and what we cannot do, we have to adjust it from the 8 to 18 and bring it down to 0 if that's what we elect to do. Now, about a week ago, the New Jersey League of Municipalities presented guidance to municipalities throughout the state. In the last couple of days, it has been reported out on our county conference calls that the Division of Local Government Services does not necessarily concur in its entirety with the guidance that the League of Municipalities put out. So that is why tonight, there is not a resolution to be considered by the council to adjust the interest rate. The state has asked all the municipalities who have not taken action yet to wait until the guidance is released by the Division of Local Government Services before taking any action. So with that, and this is directed to the Council President, Mike, there is a real possibility that sometime between now and May 1, we may need you to direct the clerk to call a special meeting in order to adopt a resolution that would adjust the interest for a period of time that will be determined in consultation between the mayor and between the town council. And that is all I have. Thank you.
It would make sense that we would adjust it downward because of the financial problems that a lot of people are having right now.
I'm glad you were clear, Michael.
But the problem is, we don't know how low we should go.
Well, Mike, through you, the software package that we have, and this is not just us, but this is the software package that almost all the municipalities in New Jersey used for collection of taxes, will only enable us to adjust it to 0. So I can have a more specific offline conversation with you tomorrow if you'd like about the specifics of that, and once I get the guidance, you know, I would like to have a conversation between the council and the administration, obviously without a quorum present, to discuss exactly how we're going to enact this and for what period of time is best for Parsippany. So I look forward to having that conversation with you before the end of the week.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Clerk.
All right, thank you, Mr. BA. I don't have any report at this point. Township offices and committees, nothing? There's no meetings?
Just one thing, the Planning Board is having a phone-in meeting Friday at noon. They're not going to hear any new cases, this is strictly to vote on, memorialize previous actions that the Planning Board has taken so that they can be memorialized and enacted upon.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'm going to move on to bids. Taken, none. To be taken, April 22, 2020, well redevelopment services, pumping system replacements, April 23, 2020, 2010 road resurfacing, curb and sidewalk program, April 24, 2020, Smithfield Park D field improvements, C quotation proposal qualifications, none. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffi, seconded by Ms. McCarthy.
Roll call, Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public. At this time, I will go ahead and read the comments and/or questions, and then we'll address them as we go along. The first comment is from a Ms. Sharon Jacobs, and what she's saying is, "Dear Mayor Soriano and Council Members, I hope you and your families are all doing well during this very difficult time for all of us dealing with this unbelievable pandemic. Please be safe. I apologize for bringing this to your attention during this nightmare that we're all dealing with COVID-19. It saddens me to think that while we're all on lockdown due to this killer virus, the Rainbow Lakes Community Club seems to be running their club's business as usual. With thousands of people out of work, sick and dying, this club, the Rainbow Lakes Community Club mailed the attached letter. I received my letter on April 8 threatening liens for non-payment of their dues and the threat of our credit rating being affected. Their actions and words are absolutely disgraceful. Not even a pandemic will stop their bullying. Shame on them. Thank you, Karen Jacobs." Now, before we address this one, I just want to read another one into the record, a very similar comment from a Ms. McKenna. She says, "Good afternoon, Parsippany Troy Hills Council. I hope all of you and your families are staying healthy during this COVID-19 virus pandemic. Please find attached a memo which Rainbow Lakes recently has sent to all neighbors who have not sent their 2020 dues. I personally feel with people losing their lives in hospitals, at homesick, temporary layoffs, etc., and to receive this in the mail is awful. Per bullet number 4, they indicate the threat of liens, and then further below state how this will affect your credit rating. While I understand everyone's attentions on the pandemic, which is mostly important to our state officials, I have also notified them. Presently now, with the Morris County court system closed down, we'll have to wait to continue our lawsuit with the Rainbow Lakes Community Association. We now have our legal liens since December 2018 and also waiting for a New Jersey legislator to address and vote on the Lake Assessment Bill." So these are the two comments related to the assessments. At this point, I think we would want our Township Council, Legal Council, just to comment if possible.
Sure, thank you Clerk. As previously noted, there are ongoing disputes between the lake associations and owners who live in and around the lake. There's also pending legislative action. There's nothing for the township to do with respect to the matters that were cited. We have to await the decisions of the courts and any action that the state legislature may take with respect to the matters that were identified in both of those comments.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Lott. Moving on to the next comment, the next comment is by Mr. Nick Homiak. He's got a few comments, so we'll go one at a time. Number one is, "Still having trouble finding things on official website, for example, ordinance 202017 Streets and Sidewalks. No one is attempting to restore the site to be user-friendly or transparent." That was just a comment, I guess. The second one is Streets and Sidewalks, 2020, he's referring to ordinance 202017. He's saying, "Our streets and sidewalks are a disgrace and part of the problem is the town workforce itself and the lack of political will going back to past administrations to have store owners be considerate of the overall community and environment. Right now, town employees still on payroll have opportunity to clean, sweep entire length of North Beverwick from all debris, empty municipal waste recycle receptacles, and clear storm drains." That was the second comment. Third comment, he says, "Concerns expressed by public about building more dense housing needing more food support." He's saying, "Last council public comments, 4/7, a resident voiced concern over the housing, over the coming housing situation and concentrated population pools and the possibility of virus disease lingering on. I reference to her statement, may I say, the concern should be lack of material source separation or recycle at apartment complexes. All apartment complexes are lax in recycle disciplines as the law mandates. Any observer, for example, viewing or inspecting Knoll apartments or any apartment complex within the town can see this. The town does collect materials at Knoll, for example." The usual excuse for lack of enforcement of state law is private property. This is unacceptable, as this phenomena of poor waste management affects us all in landfill tipping fees. Whether one homeowner is considerate or disciplined in his waste management, he or she has dragged the town with the rest of the population's lack of compliance. Parsippany waste fees are nearly $2 million overall. Ordinances go unenforced despite obvious, ongoing, and too obvious to overlook situations below." And he says, "Email Morris County 2016, still relevant 2020." I guess an email was sent that he posts here. It says, "Nick, as the value of recycling continues to fall, the markets are being forced harder to clean up their waste streams in order to keep the viability of the marketing of their end products alive. Parsippany for years had been using a recycling market that didn't care about quality, which went bankrupt, and that habits were developed in Parsippany where they accepted everything. I know Parsippany now uses a different recycling market that is more concerned with quality and the materials. Parsippany picks up, will get better and better as the market provides feedback on what is dropped off. This relationship is still new, so some of the old bad habits may take some time to change." That was from Larry Gindolph. And that's it, that's all we have. Oh, here, "What feedback has the market, if any concerning Parsippany situation? No better place for improvement stand than the lax apartment complexes. If the town authority cannot partake, then the county and state should be summoned to assess the situation, providing more recycling stations at these complexes." That's it, from Nick Homiak. Okay. Anything you want to address on that?
So the, the only thing I will address, and it'll be more of a broad statement than a specific one, is that I, I think in some of the concerns that Mr. Homiak has brought forward are probably accurate. However, I would just point out to him that we are working, as I mentioned under my report, with split crews in certain departments. So we're using only half of our normal public works staff during the course of a given week, because they flip-flop weeks in an effort to try to reduce contamination. So we don't have the physical number of bodies on a daily basis that we would under ordinary circumstances. And that also goes for the enforcement aspect of what Mr. Homiak indicated down in, in the inspection offices and in zoning, that are, we have limited staff down there. And we also are limiting our staff to where they go within the township, where they could potentially interact with individuals, just again, to reduce the spread. So while I do understand that litter is a concern, nothing annoys me more than driving to work and seeing litter on the side of the street. But based on trying to keep employees safe and make sure that they are here to do the task of collecting garbage, which is our primary concern, to maintain that service, I would just ask that folks be a little patient and a little understanding with some of these concerns until we're back here under normal situation with full staff. Thank you. Mr. Homiak, as far as the website, I, I agree with you to a certain extent that the website needs improvement, but I disagree with you saying that no one's doing anything about it. We hired a new public information officer, probably around March, I believe it was. And when we did the interview process, we went through a lot of resumes. The individual we hired had outstanding credentials when it came to managing websites. And he's done a lot with our website and our Facebook page for transparency and for accountability. It's getting better all the time. Maybe we didn't get you, you're not able to get the one thing you were looking for. Perhaps you can reach out to him yourself, he'll be able to help you. Just call the Mayor's Action Center, and he will get to you directly. But this way, you could point out the exact issue you have and correct it. But I disagree with you that we're not doing anything, but I agree with you that it can be better, and it will.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, and Mr. Homiak, I hear that you were sick recently. I hope you are getting better and feeling better.
We all do here. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kazmark. The final question and/or comment is from Mr. Kandolsky. So his question has to do with Democratic information on COVID-19 cases in Parsippany. As of Monday 4/20, there were 485 confirmed COVID cases in Parsippany, according to the Morris County website. The daily increase has averaged 22 for the past week and shows no signs of slowing. It is rapidly approaching 1% of residents. Given the well-known issues surrounding these reports, it is likely that the real number of cases is close to 10% of all residents. I understand HIPAA laws prevent release of certain information about individuals, and would like to know if this includes occupational behavioral information about groups of people, not individuals. The reason for asking is that I think residents want to know what they can do about these cases in terms of types of occupations that may be risky, such as healthcare workers, police, fire, and other first responders and workers in high-volume locations such as food stores and pharmacies. It would also be helpful to know the percentage of these cases that are in senior care centers, group homes, or nursing homes. Other useful information would be behavioral, such as if some of these people are commuting to NY, New York. Right now, we have no information from any sources as to what is causing the steady increase and no idea if this is putting us at more risk. I assumed you are as alarmed as the rest of us that we may have 10% of our, of our population infected and zero information about the factors behind these cases. If the great majority of these cases are due to occupational behavioral factors, that makes sense. Then I would think it would help the rest of us feel more in control of our own situations. If there's no causal or risk-related information, and infections appear to be random events, we should be extremely concerned that staying at home is not very effective. Bottom line, information is power, power to manage our lives. I ask that the TC and the administration do whatever it can to see if it can provide us more information on this life and death phenomenon.
One more.
Township council.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't have abbreviated. The other one, he, he talks, Ken, and he's talking about the, the medium of communication. As, he had asked initially why we're not using Zoom and other of these mediums of communication, and we had indicated that as a township, we said we weren't going to do that for security reasons, security to our networks. Ken has come back basically and stated that during the 4/7, 4/7 meeting, it would say that while town is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, it can consider other more interactive forms of meetings. Every business and institution in this country uses a form of video teleconferencing. There are hundreds of high-quality teleconferencing vendors with great reputations for security, including Cisco and Contain Verizon. Each vendor provides adequate security for these businesses, which depend on security for their existence. On the contrary, I understand that a town council's objective is transparency and everything, except closed sessions is meant to be open to the public. Therefore, I do not understand the council's position on this topic. I would like to hear more details as to the types of information they fear could not be secured and how they came to this conclusion. Clearly, the town council is using teleconferencing now to conduct meetings. Adding the ability for residents to call into the service during the public portion should be strongly considered. Other government meetings in which I have participated include the, including the New Jersey Transit Board meeting and a series of NJDEP stakeholder meetings earlier this year use this technology. Why can't Parsippany do the same? I just want to address that to Ken Dolsky. Exactly. Mr. Dolsky, we understand that other, other, other forms of government are doing what they feel is best for them. At this point in time, Parsippany does not feel that using these measures is best for the township and its security.
Zoom has security problems.
And as far as what security issues are, I can't speak at that because I'm not IT. But what I can tell you, Mr. Dolsky, is that we are looking into other measures of teleconferencing, not Zoom and not those, but other possible measures in the event that this thing is prolonged. And we are trying to get part, participation of the public live. We totally understand that this is not live, but we are meeting the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act by still allowing public to speak and to give their comments and/or questions. So we are doing what we can, and we ask for you to be patient and work with us during these times. And we are doing the best we can to try to accommodate that. Thank you, Mr. Dolsky. Okay, at this time, would anybody else want to address anything of Mr. Dolsky with regards to the COVID, the COVID comment?
I, I will just reiterate what I think was said earlier in the meeting, which is that, you know, we are responsible to maintain and respect all HIPAA laws. Our health officer has been very clear, not only with myself and with the administration, but also with all of our department heads when we were meeting and during our conference call meetings about what can and cannot be issued. And, and by, by way of that, I, I just want to stress that even now, the Attorney General's Office had indicated that law enforcement agencies should be adequately provided with the addresses of those who have been infected. And that rollout of that communication is still not 100%. And the reason it's not 100% is because there are still concerns with regard to HIPAA. So I can tell you this, if our law enforcement folks and our emergency responders are not receiving it in the way that they need to be, which I fully support, and I think the administration does too, we want our emergency responders to know what they're walking into when they respond to an emergency call. But if we're not adequately getting that information to them from the state, then certainly, you know, civilians and the public are not going to be anywhere near privy to that information either.
Thank you, Mr. Kazmark. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second, Grignani.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed. At this time, we're going to move on to ordinances. And as you can see, in the interest of streamlining, streamlining the meeting, the ordinances are going to be listed, and then we have the final, the final statement made. I'm going to go ahead and read through the ordinances. Before I read the statement, I'll ask if you guys have any questions. Is that okay, Council President?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance 2020:10, bond ordinance, providing for various road and sidewalk improvements. Ordinance 2020-16, bond ordinance, various improvements to the water utility appropriating $3,170,000, authorizing the issuance of $3,170,000 bonds for notes of the township to the finance, to finance the cost thereof. Ordinance 2020:17, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 360 Streets and Sidewalks. Any questions on those three ordinances before I go ahead and read the, the resolution passing the ordinances? Okay, "Be it resolved that the above ordinances be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills held on April 21st, 2020, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on May 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinances. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinances with the notices of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law." Motion to approve the above resolutions.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second, got it.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy? Oh, Mr. DePiero, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Okay, now moving on to the second reading and public hearing. It's going to be the same thing for these ordinances as well. We're going to have one public hearing at this particular point for all ordinances. Okay, beginning, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2020:08, amending Chapter 51, accumulation and use of funds of the Code of Parsippany Troy Hills. Ordinance 2020:09, amending ordinance number 2019:30, entitled in ordinance, establishing hourly wage agents for blue-collar employees of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills. Ordinance 2020-11, amending and supplementing Chapter 290-4 and A44-37 of the Code related to Knoll Country Club utility fees. Ordinance 2020:12, authoring the conveyance of Block 765, Lot 66, and 81.1 to Wildlife Preserves Incorporated. Ordinance 2020:13, petitioning the Highlands for plan conformance for the planning area. Ordinance 2020:14, amending and supplementing Chapter 225, land use subdivisions and site plans related to the land constraint regulations. Ordinance 2020:15, authorizing sublease, authorizing to sublease portion of Lot 2 and Block 43 as well as an amendment to a lease agreement with the Board of Education for Lot 3 and Block 388. Okay, the notices for the ordinances above were published in the Daily Record, the Official Newspaper of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, on March 23rd, 2020. The ordinances were introduced at the March 17th, 2020 regular meeting. Motion to accept the ordinances 2020-08, 2020-09, 2020-11, 2020-12, 2020-13, 2020-14, and 2020-15 be heard in their second and final reading by title only. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second, Peterson.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing for ordinances 2020:08, 2020:09, 2020:11, 2020:12, 2020:13, 2020:14, then 2020:15. Motion to open up the public hearing for the above ordinances.
Make a motion.
Second?
Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, floor is open to the public on any of the above-mentioned ordinances, seeing no one. May I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, Peterson.
Second.
Okay, actually, I, I apologize. Before we make that motion, we had one comment from Nick Homiak. And this one is probably geared for Ms. Susan Favate. "If the work of conformance is continuing remotely, then there should be, not be any excessive delays." One would think, question, "Does Parsippany now hold any additional beneficial clout in stopping improper development proposals, being the fact that the conformance is moving along? The so-called checklist approach, still not clear what this is or was." Anything on that?
Okay. So we have...
Do you like me to think about, uh, anybody?
I'm sorry, say that again, Susan?
I, I saw a mixed comment. Would you like me to respond to that comment?
If you could, if you could respond, if you have a response.
Excuse me. I like to, to, because I, I can't on here today.
Okay, Susan, if you could, if you want to just respond by the email, it'll be easier, because we can barely hear you. That was already accomplished. So, so Susan was shared, with, Mr. Homiak's comment was shared with Ms. Favate, and she has already responded to him in the form of a very well-written email.
Okay, thank you, it was hard to understand. So thank you, Ms. Favate. Okay, so now we have a motion to close the public hearing. We had a motion by Ms. Peterson, it was seconded by?
Grignani.
Janice.
Okay, Grignani or Janice, which one wants it?
Whoever wants it.
Janice, you could have it.
McCarthy. So seconded by Ms. Peterson, no, it was motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. P, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed. Whereas the above ordinances were read in title on second reading and held, and then hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinances be passed on a final reading, and then a notice of final passage of said ordinances be published in a newspaper according to law. Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll take it, Grignani.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, we have Resolution R 2020-100, authorizing emergency temporary appropriations capital improvement for a motion to approve the resolution above.
Motion, Janice.
Okay, motion made by Ms. McCarthy, second?
Grignani.
Okay, second. So a motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now moving right along to the consent agenda. "Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda." Need a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second, Janice.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving right along to the approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Nkuchu recommends authorization for payment. Authorized payment of the May 1st, 2020 regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1.6 million. Payment of bills from voucher list of 5120 through 532020 is $1,229,983.08. Motion to approve the authorization?
Motion.
Second, Janice.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.